Call this meeting to order for the Town of Silver City's Planning and Zoning Commission for January the 7th, 2025. If you would be good enough to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Aye. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Director, could we please do a roll call?
Commissioner Bayless?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Middlestadt?
Here.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Here. We have a quorum. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agendas. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Seeing as we only got some of these items, four and five, I feel like I'm not fully prepared for a discussion on those matters, so I was wondering...
It just may be a one-sided discussion. I go on with that.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. That's all I had.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, do I hear a motion to approve? Let's have the vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, hearing none, we have unanimous vote to approve the agenda. The next item is the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And any immediate discussion?
No.
Very thorough.
Very thorough, yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the December the 5th meeting of 2024?
I move to approve the minutes for the December 3rd, 2024 meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any detailed discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of approving the minutes of the December 3rd, 2024 meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next item is reports. There is none. Next item is any community input, if anyone wished to speak in community input. Hearing none. No continued business. We now get down to new business. First item is the approval or disapproval of Resolution 2501, Open Meetings Act. Has everyone had a chance to read the resolution?
Yes.
This is substantially the same as the one distributed in the December meeting. The only difference is I added a spot for the January meeting of 2026, because that's always the odd one out and it feels very lonely. So I thought if I put that in there, it just adds something or other that looks good. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 25-01, Opens Meetings Act?
So moved.
I second.
Have we any discussion? Well, that meeting is lonely. It's never referenced, the January next year meeting. Hmm, okay.
I think it's a good idea. Keeps us on our toes that there is going to be another year.
Yes, absolutely.
That's gonna be another year? Yeah. Optimism.
Okay, any changes to that resolution?
No.
Hearing none, we might do a roll call on this one if you'd be so good.
Commissioner Bayless?
I approve.
Commissioner Kennedy?
I approve it.
Commissioner Middlestadt?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is officer elections, for which I'll just get my crib sheet. In accordance with Section 46 of Robert's Rules, to summarize the election process, every January, we do the elections for the chair and the vice chair. We also do the Open Meeting Act resolution. And the elections are covered as follows. The chair calls for nominations. You can nominate any number of people to be the chair. You don't just nominate one. You can nominate two, or three, or four. You do not need to be recognized to make a nomination. No second is required, so you're not moving to approve a nomination, you're simply nominating. When the nominations die down, then we do a vote. If there is more than one person nominated for chair, and next after that would be the vice chair, then in the order in which the nominations were made, we then do a vote. The first vote that has a majority is the winning vote, and then we move on to the vice chair, and the same thing. If you wish to use a different procedure under Robert's Rules, you are welcome to discuss one, or is that procedure okay with you?
It's great.
It's good. You should feel very free to nominate anyone to be chair. I'm not gonna...
I nominate Simon Wheaton Smith for chair of Planning and Zoning.
We have a nomination. Do we have any other nominations for the chair? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination of Commissioner Wheaton Smith as the chair for this year 2025?
I move as you just described.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing...
You have done an excellent job this last year, and I would like to continue to learn from you and have you at our helm as long as you are willing.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much.
Yes, you have autographed all your work with forethought, and with the follow-through, and thoughtfulness, and having seen other commissioners in action, we can't do any better. We need you to continue.
Well, I appreciate that, but I do want you to know that I don't intend to be a dinosaur. And I do think it's important that the roles do get rotated through. Why? For fresh blood. This year, I think, this last year, we've done a lot. We'll talk about that later on the agenda, but I am not going to be upset if anyone decides that they need a different chair, if I get too stale or anything like that. And I mean that. Well, in which case, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor of appointing Commissioner Wheaton Smith to be the chair for 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none, by a unanimous vote, Commissioner Wheaton Smith is appointed chair for the next year.
Here, here.
And I just lost the agenda. Okay, here it is.
We still have one more.
We still have more. The next item on the agenda is...
No, no.
Who?
Vice chair.
Oh, yes! Gosh, you're absolutely right. I screwed up, didn't I?
Well, seeing as I occupy the seat, it's not hard to remember. There's something to it.
Do we have nominations for the vice chair for the year 2025?
I nominate Susan Z. Middlestadt for such position.
We have one nomination. Do we have any more nominations for vice chair? The nominations are closed. Do I hear a motion then to appoint Commissioner Middlestadt as vice chair?
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor of appointing Commissioner Middlestadt as vice chair for the year 2025, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say no. Hearing none, the motion is unanimous, and Commissioner Middlestadt is appointed to vice chair. And my apologies for skipping over that one.
I wouldn't have minded, really.
Oh, I would. It's important to have a good vice chair, because if one of us is sick or anything like that, and one of the things that I liked in the last year was the role plays, where everyone is getting a chance to run a role play meeting and see how easy it is to screw up, and how to dig yourself out of the hole. The next item on the agenda is councillor briefing. I did invite Arme Pro Tem, if she would like to attend it this evening. I know the weather's a bit cold, because we're roughly halfway through this project of A, the housing plan, and B, the code rewrite. The housing plan has had a couple of councillors working on it, Commissioners, Correction Councillor Snyder and Prince, and so we've not done a lot of work on the housing plan ourselves, but we're moving into the stage where the draft is ready. We'll get a chance to talk a little bit about that this evening, which means we will be moving into the code rewrite, and we of course have consultants who are working with us, very kindly arranged by Community Development. So this was an opportunity to at least have a mid-course correction, should we need to have one. I think the document we have is about as ready as it's going to get, so we don't have much more work to do on that. We'll talk about that in reports from the commission in a little bit. So that is, the next item on the agenda is the housing plan review. Did all of you get a housing plan review? If not, it's page roughly 402, if I remember correctly, of this document I would like to give you. And you'd be kind enough... In case you're wondering, this enormous document completely replaces affordability and everything else, code rewrite efficiency and everything else like that. And if one goes to page 402, it has two pages looking at the housing plan. This is, you have to remember that the housing plan we have right now is only a draft. So the consultant sends it over to Community Development. The second of those pages, page 403, has got a number of data points. All they are is data points, doesn't mean they're good or bad, but I do have some notes that we may want to check on discrepancies. Some numbers may seem a little high or low, and the page before that, page 402, brings one, two, three, four, five issues that we probably need to talk about with the consultants when next we talk with them. So that is my briefing to you on the housing plan, and now everyone's got a copy. And, Madam Director, I think you have a copy also. So there's nothing earth-shattering, we just need to clear out some of those issues with the data points. It's a discussion as opposed to information, so we can't make any decisions, but if anyone has any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Does everybody have this?
I'm not sure if they do, and if they don't, I will make sure we get a draft copy of the housing plan itself to everyone.
Because this is referencing this, correct?
Yes, yes.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. And I want you to know that this big fat book that I just gave you, this replaces in its entirety everything else we've done on the code rewrite. It's also got in it the emails we've received from the public. It's also got in it some other points. For example, insurance cancellations on houses have happened in Silver City because of fire risk. And I had a cancellation, and I went to another broker, I got a binder, and a couple weeks later, nice tribe, so I couldn't get insurance. I did eventually get it. My point is, think about what can we possibly recommend to the county council as far as fire risk goes? And one suggestion I have is, we have a commission now of five commissioners. It was three, I believe, when we passed the original 2010 Land Use Code, and we had tried to get an ETJ, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction Commission, going, but it didn't happen. But maybe now that we have a county commission with five commissioners, I think it's worth trying again. So the gist of the comments on the fire risk is, well, let's try to talk to the county. Why? Because we have a one-mile and a three-mile buffer around the town where we may be able to influence what happens in those areas. Don't know if it will happen, but it's a recommendation.
Is this issue just for the town of Silver City? And what do we do for these things, wildfires cross political boundaries? I'm kinda curious what we can do as a town body in relation to this more regional issue?
The question is, what indeed can we do? And I think my answer would be, if we did have an ETJ Commission, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction Commission, where the county and the town work together, then we might be able to do some preventative measures on fires that may happen very close to the town's border. So that would be one benefit. For example, there was a scrapyard fire in the county earlier in 2024 that became very serious. Well, if that was pretty close to the town, we have a problem. And as I mentioned, I'm not the only one who's had insurance canceled due to fire risk. Now, I did do a lot of fire mitigation, and the insurance company did all its photographs, but yes, cancellations, I've heard other people have had cancellations. So that's why it's in the big fat book, worth talking about, worth thinking about, but it's up to the town council to decide if they wish to push for a renewed effort to get the ETJ Commission going. Also in this big fat book, I've got some thoughts on how to possibly enhance the recent cannabis ordinance, number 1333. They are, as always, merely suggestions. However, those suggestions are backed up with information that I gathered. Page 600 of the big fat book is backed up with what other towns have done, and I include some comments from those other towns. And it's to do with spacing. And I'm sure when we get more conditional use permits coming in, it's possible that that may be an issue that citizens may want to talk about, but it's not in the ordinance, therefore we have no authority to require spacing between a cannabis facility and a residence or a residential zone. I don't have a dog in the fight. I've done a lot of studying on cannabis, so I could be impartial, but roughly half of the municipalities do require spacing between cannabis facilities, and a third of the other municipalities do require spacing between a cannabis facility and a residence or a residential zone. So what we can do is include that in our recommendations, and it's up to the council to decide. The PNC doesn't make any decisions when it comes to legislative matters. We only make recommendations that will go into the ordinance. And as I say, this book replaces absolutely everything. I've simplified it so that we don't have all sorts of texts cluttering up. It just focuses on what the group problem is, why it matters, what the recommendations are, much simpler than the previous document. It refers to where the original citizen comments came from, and those happen to be in the back of the book. So this is a complete document that replaces the previous one with its multitudinous revisions. So that's my discussion on the housing plan. We will make sure everyone does get a copy of the draft. Any other questions or comments?
Very thorough. Thank you for going through it with such care and alacrity. You like that word?
Yes. That's a five-dollar word. Hearing on the next item is item number five, Discussion of the Land Use Zoning Rewrite Review. This is the book, and it occurred to me that we've been looking at other municipalities. There are 18 that I study, and so I went through, and I'll give everyone a machine-readable copy. This is a very short document which looks at the other municipalities to see if there's anything differently that they do with variances, conditional use permits, zone changes, and things like that. Again, it's short and simple, and it's got the internet URL, so you can check the land use codes if you wish. And the bottom line on that document is a couple of things that I've noticed. One or two towns actually review every year conditional use permits to make sure the conditional use permit is still needed. And another thing that I've noticed, one or two municipalities get rather more detailed about what the hardship is when a variance is requested. And I've actually put bars on the side of the paper. I did them in the wrong color, so it's very difficult to see those bars, but it shows where the something worth reading is. So what's the bottom line behind this document? Nothing more than, should we, as part of the code write, offer suggestions for the four findings for a conditional use, the seven for a variance, and the one in seven for a zone change? Or does everyone think those findings are effective?
No, I find them quite vague, so I'm eager to see what...
I was using English terminology.
Would you?
Yeah. I think we want the variances to be helpful to those who need them, and we should review them to see if in fact they perhaps might need to be a little bit tighter. And who are the experts? Well, among other things, Community Development Department, our director is, may have ideas too. So the real point behind this document is, do we need to review the findings? That simple. Okay. Thank you.
When you say the findings, you mean those statistics, that list of statistics? I saw some notes that said "seems excessive." Is that what you're talking about?
Specifically, whenever a permit is required, be it the land use correction, a zone change, or a conditional use, a dimensional adjustment, or a variance, the applicant has to demonstrate they have met the various findings. Now, for example, a variance has seven findings that must be made, and we're very lucky in the Community Development staff report, I think does a very good job of identifying The question really is, are those findings still relevant today? Because they've been like that for a very long time. And some other municipalities have got different rules. It's not an earth-shattering thing, but since we're going to be rewriting the code, should we also review those findings? And by review, I mean recommend something different to the town council through Community Development and the contractors that we have. So there's no answers tonight. It's just if you would be good enough to look at it and see what you think. Any further discussion on the rewrite?
It's great to see what the other counties have done, just to kind of see the best practices or lack thereof.
From those 18 towns that do have their zoning codes online, yes, the answer is you can see best practices, and you can also see worst practices, and those are things that can only help our council as we move forward. Remember, this is your commission. I simplified this book to make it much easier for everyone, so...
Are there any, since you've done all this work, are there any other towns that seem like they've really got it down well? Is there one, any that stick out as a...
Well, there's one who is a well-known town and said, hey man, we're not gonna have any zoning. So that's one solution to it. And then there's another one that has some very tight rules. There's a balance in between the two. Maybe the balance that we have is okay. I don't know. But what we've got is an architect, we've got a civil engineer, a commissioner with expertise in other commissions, and if you look over this, you may see things that I may not have seen.
Yeah, there's a lot to digest. It's interesting to see some people don't do anything, you know? Like Elmer Guardo says, R1, sure, put it in there, that's fine. So it's interesting to see such diversity.
Yeah, I think it's interesting they allowed in R1. It's basically everything. And then the other town that, hey man, we don't need that stuff. And to be fair, we need to bear in mind that there are some very large cities that also don't have that kind of zoning.
Like Houston.
Houston in particular. And they've, on the whole, done very well without it, but they have other mechanisms. And the point is, is there anything we can learn from their successes and their mistakes?
Well, look at this Socorro one. "Conditional use permits shall be subject to review by staff on each annual anniversary." There's a lot of work for you.
It's good for jobs, satisfying your job.
Do we have an inventory of every conditional use permit? And when they were issued, to review? I was like, huh.
Is there like a decrease of work act that we can do?
Now, I can...
Something like things, you know? I mean, that's what I would like to see, is just simplification of procedures in all of this stuff. Because that's always been the biggest bugaboo for these things. So anything that leads to that is a plus for me.
Well, we do have a lot of feedback. As far as the public went, I think that I opened my eyes most dramatically was manufactured homes, where they own the home, they rent the land, and it's happening throughout the country. The land is being sold from under them. Well, several problems happened. In the case in Silver City that I'm thinking of, the land rent immediately went up quite substantially. However, in other states, they have actually been evicted, and you might say, well, that's the way it is with mobile homes. But think about this, you've got a mobile home... about this. You've got a mobile home, it has electricity, water, sewer, maybe gas. So where are you gonna move the mobile home to?
Well, they're not designed to be removed.
Well, some of them may not make it down the driveway, but the newer ones, under manufactured homes, which have different standards of construction, they can. But how much does it cost to move one? And you find some land, what's it gonna possibly cost to put the utilities in? It's not that simple. And the, what we can do is to come up with recommendations to the town council. One recommendation that I think ought to be very palatable is the Albuquerque Ordinance 24-52, I believe it is, which, as far as I can see, doesn't have a regulatory taking. It simply says, if you, the landowner, intend to sell before you list, you need to give notice to the manufactured home owners so that they can see if they can come up with funding to buy the land itself.
So, you mentioned there, not that specific issue, but how do we make recommendations to the city council once we reach some kind of consensus? Or do we have a strategy?
The strategy is, I would say, probably twofold. One, to, in working with Community Development Director, to get feedback on how realistic or unrealistic Community Development thinks some of the suggestions would be. And this other one is to have a joint meeting with the county town council. And I was hoping that by inviting our Mepro 10 this evening, that we could have a dialogue, at least for a mid-course correction, a wee out of line. Well, I will keep pushing for a joint meeting.
Okay.
I had a question. I'm looking at this manufactured housing part that you're referencing now. There's some statement here, with some twenty percent of residences being manufactured homes, issues affecting those residents are an impact on the town. But I'm wondering, what percentage of those residences are just on private land, and how many of those residences are in communities? Cause I don't think it's the same thing.
It's a question that I hope will be in the 2025 Land Use Correction Housing Plan. The 2010 Housing Plan did go into some more specificity. Not sure they did that, but that is obviously a very important figure. We do have a lot of manufactured homes. It's quite a large number, and you're quite right, a lot of them are probably on land owned by the manufactured homeowner. But we also have mobile home parks that that is not necessarily the case. And you could have a case where the land and the manufactured homes are owned by the landowner, and it's merely a rental situation.
Yeah, there's quite a, quite a bit of that.
Yeah. So there's things that ought to modify our recommendations to meet the reality. I am, I will say, we have one citizen who has spent an enormous amount of time researching these issues, and that is a resource, I think, that we ought to use. And under paragraph nine of section six point one point one of the land use and zoning code, I believe it's paragraph nine, there is actually an ability for the council to appoint someone who has done that kind of research to help. So that may also be an option. I don't know. I'm open to all ideas. We are open to all ideas.
Yeah, cause part of me is like, these are, some of these are very distinct issues, and we could move, we, a year ago, we just, not a year ago, but in the spring, we discussed about doing it as a big package, or doing it as a piece by piece. We have an issue, say, the notice to the landowners, that would be easy to break out and bring to the council, and maybe make some progress sooner rather than later, waiting on the finalization of the report, or the change, you know, or the proposed, uh, report on, you know, with all the recommendations on zoning, if we are like-minded. But I don't, do we, do we continue discussing that? Do we have to vote on an idea ourselves? Do we have to be, uh, do we need a, a majority of the commission to agree that we should bring this? Or can you just decide? You know, how do we do that, that part?
I can't decide anything.
Yes. I mean, I mean hilariously, I mean, we have no real power, except idea generation and, and finding out, you know, lobbying our counselors, as we would, as regular citizens, it almost feels like. So that's.
My suggestion would be that let's go through the groups. In the previous document, each group had quite a lot of other stuff going with it, the individual comments. So I've cut it down to just each group saying, what is it? Why does it matter? What's the recommendation? So I've tried to make this very easy for us to go through and collect your views. And then we can meet with the Community Development Director. We, we can't have a quorum unless it's noticed. But we, one of the things that the town has done last year, uh, thanks to the directors, we now have bi-weekly meetings between Planning and Zoning and the Director. And we also amended the bylaws so that it isn't just the Chair going, it's one other commissioner. And in fact, uh, we have, is it this week, I think we have an experience meeting? And I'm hoping Vice Chair.
I'm planning on it.
A little bit there. Sometimes we may have other topics, in which case, and I've done this before, I've invited Commissioner Bayless or Commissioner Kennedy. So that way, we don't have a quorum problem with the Open Meetings Act, that it's more than just my set of eyes. I want as much as possible for full commission. So my recommendation is have a look at the beginnings of this book, and see what you think is worth focusing on.
Okay.
And we could put that on the schedule for either the next meeting or the one after that, to narrow it down, what do we really want to do?
Okay.
This is my suggestion.
Thank you.
Yeah, our consultant, I was looking at their report, and they said that the rents here in Silver City have gone up forty-one percent, just in a global sense, not just the land rent people, as compared to like thirty-one percent. So it, rents are an issue. They even recommend a commission or some body to look into the rental issue, but it's certainly an issue, and certainly something we need to think about. And regretfully so, quite frequently, city councils are reactive, reactive, not proactive. So somebody like us, we might have to be the catalyst. I mean, I don't know.
We are, and, and we are authorized to make studies and recommendations. And it'll go through Community Development, and then hence to the mayor to decide if and when we have a joint meeting.
I mean, the number that struck me was twenty-five percent of the housing infrastructure was worth more than half a million dollars. And.
Where are they?
We don't have, and then you look at the salaries and the household incomes, and we're way at the bottom. And so.
Are most of those people out of towners?
Do we even have a way to know if those are second homes or Airbnbs? We don't really have, as far as I could tell.
Chairman, if I may, um, the consultant did reach out a few weeks ago, I believe it was for one of our regularly scheduled meetings, that they had some revisions to the presentation that they gave the public during the housing plan meeting. And one of them was the statistic, I believe, that you just referenced about the, a very large majority of houses being over half a million dollars. That is different. In the presentation, she had swapped the national and Silver City's statistics.
Oh, interesting, cause that's in the draft report.
Yes, so that was part of, yes. So she did note that that was a mistake.
Okay. That's a relief.
I think, I think, let me see.
I was gonna say it's seventy-five percent.
Let's see. Give me just a moment, I apologize. Yes, so home values previously showed seventeen percent were half a million to a million dollars, and six percent were over a million dollars. That is the national average. The average in Silver City is in basically unseeable sliver on this bar chart, it's over a million dollars. Um, a very small portion, that's so small, it doesn't show a percentage of half a million to a million.
Okay, so there's a, there's a major mistake in this.
Eleven percent is three hundred to five hundred thousand, and then eighty-eight percent are under three hundred thousand. The home values. So there's fifty percent less than a hundred and fifty thousand, thirty-eight percent, a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand.
Do we know how, did, did they do that with their Zillow analysis, or sales analysis, or property taxes?
It was based on, I believe, census data.
Okay, so it's a little out of date.
It was the five-year estimate between twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two.
Oh, so that's quite a bit out of date. Okay. But that's a much different figure than is in this draft report.
So they just switched the labels of the two.
Okay. Um, what is the, now that, so we've had this draft report, if we have comments, do we filter them back through you on the review of the report, or we just?
Chairman, um, yes. Uh, we, you could send it over to me, or if you, uh, have anything pressing that you want to address, whenever we have, I have a monthly meeting with the consultants, and it is also in tandem with our chairman meeting. So if there's something pressing that you would like to address, request maybe with the Chair, or send it to me at any point, we can relay that information. So you could either speak in person, well, not in person, but to them directly, or I can present that information.
All right, thank you.
One of the points that Commissioner Bayless mentioned is how rent has gone up over time, but pay and compensation has not. And that is going to make it very difficult to achieve much success in dramatic reductions in costs. That's obvious. One thing that I did read in the draft report was that there was a thought, that people who could afford a more expensive house might buy a less expensive ones. And I'm, I'm not convinced that's a general rule. I really am not, because whenever I have bought a house, I buy the house that I actually need and see how I can afford it.
I bought the cheapest house I could afford every time.
Thank you for that helpful comment. Any, any other questions or comments on the code rewrite? Bottom line is read the first few pages where we have the, the groups, and see if you think those are where we should focus. And I suggest we make that an agenda item, to collect the thoughts you've had in the intervening time to change our approach.
I'd like to go back to the fire risk, um, discussion, cause that seems relatively new. Was that, was that part of previous discussion?
No.
And I'm not sure if you guys read the New York Times article, but it was quite shocking. I thought Silver City was gonna be an example of a safe place to be in, in many ways, and Florida and all was gonna get the knock. But to read that was the case here, and that there's really no solution, except for like, okay, you're out of luck. Um, and it made me realize that we have to think of like, creating insurance-proof building strategies in terms of truly addressing fire by making them fireproof, for example. And so I'm just wondering if any other communities have addressed this in other fire areas, like Northern California? Because if people can't have a house here, they're gonna just further leave here.
I, I'm, I'm wondering if, um, with your architectural skills and network, if you could, or if you wanted to think about doing some research in that, I would appreciate it. I, this is a discussion only, so we can't make any decisions. But if someone wanted to take the lead on that kind of research.
So I have heard, um, some of the ideas that are out floating around are, you know, fire-wise strategies that are part of, uh, say, like, Community Development has in Silver City, there's rules about how close the houses can be, and what the houses are made of, and things like that. And there's, there's a, a, a less stringent situation in the county, and that's sort of, I believe, what the Chair is touching on, that we need to have a joint effort to discuss these issues, because what has been allowed in the county regarding ingress and egress from subdivisions, where fire trucks can't get in, to how heavily wooded the properties are, and the weed, not weeds, but the growth around the properties, and that, you know, you, I had, I read that article, but then I also had to do the Christmas bird count for, off of a Little Walnut. I drove twenty-two miles in the subdivisions off of Little Walnut. And I just couldn't believe how many places you couldn't get a Subaru turned around in on the public road, that I had to go into driveways to turn around. And you could see cul-de-sacs dead-ending, mere hundred feet from each other, where they could have put a loop in, but they chose not to put a loop in. And so it all, all of these practices of how their, their subdivisions were allowed to be built over time, have caused this urban interface to become very dangerous in Silver City. And it's not, we're not alone. You're right. And so there are models, say flood insurance, earthquake insurance, where the government takes on funding of the, uh, of the, the risk, takes on the risk, as opposed to capitalist, you know, for-profit insurance companies. But it still costs a lot of money to buy earthquake insurance and flood insurance. You still have to buy it, and you still, but you can get it. And so there are models out there. But I think part of that model has to be a recognition that we are in community together, and that how we choose to build on this urban interface impacts all of us. And the risk of a structure fire, such as the one that we had over, off of, uh, Kirkland last year, that was a very big danger. And if it had started jumping house to house, you know, who knows what would have happened? And we, we had a fire on Boston Hill a few years ago, that almost came onto the downtown edge. It almost got to the houses there. And we all have an obligation, I think we do have as a town, an obligation to say, this is what we need to provide a safe community, when it's, you know, that fire trucks need to be able to get up there, that you need to have water pressure up there, that you need to have, uh, you know, weed control, or, or, uh, you know, I don't even know what they call it, but the safe distance from the house, what they made you do, they had to chop down limbs and take out trees. And people are gonna resist it, but they're, they're, all of us not being able to insure our homes is the, is the fallout. And that is what insurance is, is a collective risk, and we have to work together.
Yeah, forgive my ignorance, but the thrust of the New York Times article was that people can't get fire insurance?
Yeah. And I saw the, when I moved here two and a half years ago, I was, uh, I'm in town, less than half a mile, I'm like a quarter mile from the fire station. I have a, a metal roof, adobe-sided house, and there was one limb touching the roof. And they were like, that's got to go. Like, you have to get that off the roof, or we won't insure you. And it just, it felt crazy, insane. But then I worded other, other neighbors, it's really haphazard. You know, you don't know who's gonna get the drive-by, and they're gonna be like, you got the problem.
In my case, I removed three trees in proximity to my house before this was even a. this was even a, a thought in anyone's mind. Uh, then the insurance came and looked at it. Twelve mature trees had to go. Only one was touching the structure. But twelve mature trees had to go. So I, might I suggest that each of us take that, this chapter on fire risk and come up with your thoughts. So when we meet and, and to address this for real as an action item, uh, we can collect all of your thoughts into something that can be meaningful. How does that sound to supply?
Sounds great, yeah.
And the same with anything. Just because I wrote my thoughts on this, my thoughts on the housing plan, my thoughts on the cannabis, that doesn't mean that's our thoughts. So feel free to rewrite whatever.
Just anecdotally, in another jurisdiction, uh, some squatters were in a vacant house, set it on fire and the fire trucks couldn't get there and they had to hire the, uh, United States Forest Service to bring in tanker planes to drop fire retardant onto the fire. And it cost the town one hundred thousand dollars. So there's some, there's some serious issues that we, you know, that need addressed. I mean, it's, it's kind of scary.
And these fires, it's not like our fire department says, no, we're not going to come out and help you in Santa Clara or up in the county. They all respond and it does cost us all to, to, uh, address these issues. And I'm glad that's, I mean, it's a, a great example of cooperation, but we do wind up paying.
Okay, so, uh, to sum that up, please look at this document. Put your own thoughts together, each of you, and then we'll make it an action item discussion. And all of it is simply a starting point to your commission. Any other comments on the agenda item? Hearing on the next item is reports from staff.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, we don't have any applications for public hearings in February's regular meeting. So I just wanted to let you all know. And we are also conducting interviews for the planner slash math and tech this week and potentially next week as well.
That, that, um, means that maybe the February, uh, meeting can't make decisions. Uh, maybe the, uh, February meeting might be a role play uh, sequence and it can be there or in the conference room at the city hall annex. And I think that's actually a very good time to do some more role plays. Unless I hear any objections in the meantime. Mr. and Mrs. Featherstone-Hore and other persons will be very active. Next item on the agenda is reports from commission commissioners. Uh, who would like to?
You just thought of, uh, you know, as we look at months that start with a one, we always kind of look backwards a little bit and try to figure out. I think you did a great job last month of talking about a year-end report. Uh, something that's kind of fun to think about is, uh, there at the planning, uh, commission, what, what do they get the most phone calls about?
I like that.
I'm sorry, I was, what does the community development department get the most?
Yeah, yeah. What, what do people call you up about? Usually people are pretty motivated if they grab the phone and start yakking.
Um, Chairman, if I may, the most we receive are permits for like accessory buildings, carports specifically or garages. Um, we do receive a lot of applications for businesses, small businesses, peddler's permits to move through town. Um.
What was the last thing?
Peddler's permits.
Peddlers, oh, okay.
So they, they can move throughout the town as long as they have the authorization of the property owner rather than a business has to be in a fixed place. Um, let's see, fences.
Like, uh, food truck, food, food trucks, yeah.
Yeah, some, you know, like things of that nature. Um, fences. We do receive some requests on what it would look like to get a fence higher than eight feet. And so that is a variance, of course, and we inform them of that. Uh, lately it has been conditional use, uh, inquiries regarding duplexes in the residential eight zoning district.
Oh, nice.
And so I inform them of the conditional use process. And that's as much I can think off the top of my head right now.
Well, it's good to know. It's good to know.
Question, the Kennedy, any reports?
Um, no reports per se, except that I've appreciated this opportunity to learn how government works and actually co-create systems that work for the community. And to be engaged, especially in the planning process, um, is really such a kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity unless you've lived really long. But to be able to do the right thing for the community through making proper decisions and doing the, the hard work that you're doing to organize the thoughts so they actually lead to wise decision-making by us as officials and by the public themselves. It just feels like really honorable work to do. And so I've really been glad to be part of it.
Commissioner Mifflin. Well, that leads it down to me. Um, the twenty twenty-four review and a couple of thoughts. Uh, in December, I did distribute the review, but to summarize it up, we revised the bylaws which were nineteen years old. And the biggest problem that was references to the land use code that wasn't active at the time. Revised process to move, uh, to Roberts rules to the latest edition. And I'm still doing more work on that. And one of the things we did.
I got one already.
You already swiped it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Uh, here in Technicolor is this year's handbook. And I strongly encourage you to read it because there are additions in it. First of all, it has the elements of the land use code that we use with a caveat, please double check with the official online version on the town's website. Additionally, I went through the entire land use code, uh, to see if, uh, if there are any other inconsistencies. And I found that the Roberts rules, which we're obligated to use has a different definition to the word recess than NMSA seventy-eight ten dash fifteen, the Attorney General's Guide for Open Meetings Act, the Municipal League Chapter Five, the our land use code and consequently our bylaws. Uh, so what have I done with this handbook? I did add a section where we addressed a couple of things. Do we have special rules of order which override Roberts rules? And the answer is yes, there's a bunch of them in the bylaws. So I've documented what they are. Another thing I did was I looked at what we do because we are less formal than town council. Uh, a permission recognized by the municipal league. Uh, but I found that we have quite a few customary rules that we follow that are not entirely consistent with Roberts rules. So I've documented those in this handbook. Why? Because first of all, that's what we're doing. Uh, and secondly, have a look at it. What do we need to change? Now, I was also, um, asking that we, uh, be perhaps more consistent when we do a vote. It's officially I or no. And the way to remember that is we all have eyes and we all have a nose. Uh, because if you're struggling to create the minutes or write shorthand notes, if we all say I or no, it's easy. But if someone says yes or some other things, it throws the, uh, minute keeper out of track at times. And I include the Roberts rules reference to where it is, eyes and nose. It's in there.
I didn't know that.
I'm, how about the present and here?
Present and here. Uh, present is used if you haven't made up your mind necessarily and you want to abstain. But I should point out that while the town council, as far as I know, can abstain under our bylaws very specifically, and it's been there for twenty years now, a commissioner cannot abstain unless it's a conflict of interest, be that personal or financial. We don't have that option. So present doesn't work. Pass is another option. Pass means I haven't quite made up my mind yet. I want to see what everyone else thinks and then I'll adjust it myself and, and hope not to get into too much trouble. So that is a legitimate thing. I've never seen anyone do it in planning and zoning. It's either I or no. And I, uh, put a few extra notes in there on inconsistencies. For example, the recess thing. Uh, page thirty-eight has got rules of custom that we're doing that are inconsistent or whatever. So please have a look at this. It's your commission. If the, if you collectively think we need to amend Roberts rules, which we can do, it will special rules of order, put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it. What else did we do? The, um.
Would now be the time to put things on the agenda to, to address this for next time?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Just either let me have it or, uh, or, uh, uh, our director of community development, who is, is a little on the busy side. And I'm the one who doesn't have a life, so feel free to send it to me.
Is okay if I just send you an email?
Absolutely, yeah. And I, I wouldn't create a conflict with, uh, the Open Meetings Act. We acquired, acquired funding last year for some commissioners to get some training. And that's as far as I know first. Uh, even going back to when I was on the town council, PNC didn't have training. Our real-world role plays, the feedback I've got has been positive, including from people who've, uh, uh, either sat in the audience and then spoken later. Obviously, we did standard hearings. The review of the land use code, how did this happen? Our previous chair constantly talked about two things, Commissioner Cybo. One of them is the desire to hold public meetings to find out what people think of our code. Well, we simply adopted that and moved forward with it. And Commissioner Mittelstadt triggered this with the discussion on accessory dwelling units. So what we've been doing with the land use code rewrite is really the seed that Commissioner Cybo planted and we have grown it. Received public input. Uh, we had, uh, over sixty suggestions from the public. Commissioners or staff came up with seventy ideas. Questions on the existing land queues, use code, over forty questions that we have that need resolution. And community development started a process, I think, very valuable, which is having bi-weekly meetings between the chair and the director. And as I mentioned, uh, when I go, I do my best to bring another commissioner with me. And also when we interview candidates, that's in our bylaws now that another commissioner will also be present. Why? We want the candidate to know what they're getting into. And we also, it's always good to have two perspectives on these things. One of the things that I think Commissioner Bayless mentioned earlier in one of the agenda items is we go through this rewrite every ten years. I would like to suggest that we do incremental code improvements. And I suggest that we pick a focal item each year the community development sees as being an issue. And we make that a year project, doesn't have to take a lot of meetings, but to focus on that and see if we can do incremental code change reviews through ordinance, recommend it to the town council. So that the ex, the new twenty twenty-five land use code will get a chance to be re-updated each year based on what's happening. I don't know if it's going to work. I don't know if that'll be successful, but you know what? It might save the town because we would be more reactive and that would be good for the town council and it'll be good for the residents. To that end, I am allowed to give what's called previous notice that in the next council meeting, I will propose that we do have an amendment to the bylaws. And that is that in January, when we do the Open Meetings Act resolution, when we do the elections, I'm proposing that in January, we have a plan for what to do in the coming year. And it would include reminding us to pick a topic that needs looking at in the land use code. But that is my suggestion. To your commission, you get to decide.
Like you're saying, being proactive instead of reactive.
Yes.
Makes sense, especially of some of these things where it takes longer study and it's easy to get distracted and, you know, like, okay, this month we're really focusing on fire. This month we're focusing on water issues. This month we're working on, you know, whatever else comes up.
And I'm hoping we don't have to have any special meetings this year. I know we had some last year, twenty twenty-four, but we can fit these into our regular scheduled meetings. And it looks as if February, we're going to have, uh, role plays as well as possibly, uh, an agenda item on, uh, suggesting the annual plan and incremental reviews. And that will be open for discussion and decision. Um, it's been pointed out to me, and I'm not sure I shall agree with it.
I don't know.
I, I know. Should there be an apostrophe, uh, in the word commissioners handbook? Well, here's my answer. Cause I noticed that the other day. And the answer is no, because it's commissioners collectively having a handbook.
So it should have an apostrophe after the S.
It could.
Let me point out that when I went through our equivalent of high school, I got twelve percent on my final exams on the English language. I swear whatever I do.
Because I, I say that because it says underneath it, municipal leagues with apostrophes, officials apostrophes.
Thank you for those helpful ones.
That did not have an apostrophe S.
Are you suffering from laryngitis now?
Oh, I know. Yes, sorry. I just realized, I, I, I don't. It's not consistent and.
Okay, well, I have an excuse. Here's the excuse.
I know you love to print these out.
My computer, which was, um, no, this is true, was Windows eight point one. And it finally said, this is, um, I was using Windows two thousand and three. I updated to Windows two thousand and seven and my computer objected, so I had to buy a new computer. And it's Windows, uh, uh, eleven, using Word two thousand and twenty-one. And the old computer and the new computer couldn't reconcile that. So everything is now Windows eleven, Word two thousand and twenty-one, and I haven't got a clue how to use that word processor. That is my excuse.
I, I graduated, I graduated to Strunk and White. That's what I would refer to.
The test is, is it plural or is it possessive?
That's what I can't decide.
Yeah, but if it's plural and possessive, you need the apostrophe.
Take the S off and call it commissioner handbook.
Oh, I like that.
That way you can solve it.
Right, well, um.
Are you getting all this for the minutes, please?
Uh, any further items to discuss on the agenda?
No, I'm so glad you're chair again.
And I figured that, you know, you, uh, helped me as the vice chair in spite of my, uh, uh, forgetting that we had to do that.
Should we appoint a parliamentary grammar, grammarian?
A, a grammarian.
No, because when he goes, when he goes through what our skills are, it's clear the written language is probably not our top skill. We got Juno down there, she could tell us what we should be doing.
I am a member of the, um, American.
I am a member of the, um, American Institute of Parliamentarians. And if anyone wants to do a short session one day on all seven hundred and fourteen pages of the twelfth edition, I learned when it was a hundred and seventy pages. So this has been, uh, uh, almost a year-long study. In which case, hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion to second. Any comments?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. And I would like to thank the Silver City Daily Press, uh, reported Juno for being here this evening. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the reports that you write. Yes. And by the way, we always have fun in our meetings. Municipal League recognizes we're less formal than the town council. And everyone has done a very good job of being informal. And by the way, we, we do need to remember that when we have a hearing, we really do need to follow, uh, the orders of communication goes through the chair. This is not a power grab. It's the way it's supposed to be. And it also slows things down and it gives us all time to think. And I think we've been doing better. I would also, uh, remind that we have to, every word we utter has to be entirely impartial because we are. And one of the reasons I did a lot of courses on cannabis, the reason was I needed to be impartial. So with that, those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye. Anyone opposed? Say no. Hearing none?